The meeting of February 4, 2021 of the Planning and Zoning Commission has come to order. The governor of Iowa has declared a public emergency because of the movement.
You have to, can you turn it up any more or less?
He said he's got it completely out.
Okay. I didn't hear my Bluetooth in.
But it's, it's coming through the computer and not the TV.
I think the Waltons have their sound on, which is what's coming through.
Hank, it's actually the Veterans Post that's coming through. They've muted now. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anyway, the, when an in-person meeting is impossible or impractical, Iowa Code Section 21.8 permits a governmental body to conduct a meeting by electronic means. Meeting will be conducted by video conference using Zoom from the council chambers. The zoning administrator and necessary staff will be in the council chambers. And not the eight commission members will not be in chambers, but will participate via Zoom conferencing. Comments for items that are on the agenda may be made by submitting them prior to the meeting to the zoning administrator or by calling 319-596-0179 during the meeting. Meeting minutes will be, still be kept and will include a statement explaining why an in-person meeting was impossible or impractical. That's sort of the boilerplate. So we'll call the meeting to order. And if the administrator would call the roll. Okay, we're gonna be a minute. We've got the voice problem here. When do they do that while it's loading? I'll go ahead and call the roll. Bagel Minus here, Kate Payne.
Here.
Douglas Denshuder.
Here.
Richard Dane.
Here.
Mary French.
Here.
Stephanie Gardner.
Here.
Dave Huser.
Here.
Kathy Olson.
Here.
Heidi Solheim.
Here.
So let's look at the agenda for the, for tonight's meeting. Do I hear a motion to receive the agenda?
Some of.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, those in favor say yes.
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 Those opposed, no. And the agenda is approved as submitted. Minutes of the January 7, 2021 meeting were sent out. Any additions, corrections that you need?
Where is your sheet for the meeting?
Hold on just a second.
No, the link to the actual meeting, where you got that on page? Can I have that?
Yeah. We've got to get a minor glitch taken care of here so we can keep going.
Do you want to keep doing the minutes?
And then we go right in.
I keep going to the meeting and then we'll.
Okay, okay, let's go back to those minutes. Minutes of the January 7, 2021 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do we hear a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve.
You have a second? Okay, any additions, corrections? Hearing none, those in favor say yes.
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 The motion is carried, minutes are received. Let's go now to the public hearing. We're gonna take a few minutes on this because it's important that everybody knows how, what the decorum is, what the protocol is for a public hearing here at the Planning and Zoning Commission. The, the issue of the special provisional use is widely not understood. And what happens with a special provisional use was, one of the questions that came up at the January meeting, no, not the January meeting, the October 1 meeting of 2020. An attorney, city attorney Wager stated, and I quote, "That with special provisional use, you are not looking at residential regulations. Rather, you are looking at whether or not a commercial use should be allowed in an area." In this instance, the WAVP is requesting to conduct a 30-foot by 50-foot building for storage, which is different, a different use than is currently used on the property. Wager stated that the commission should be looking at whether or not the construction of a storage building is consistent with the property and with the surrounding neighborhood. Later in that meeting, Greg Gash asked if the commission would explain the special provisional use again. And Wager stated that, quote, "WAVP was allowed at this property in 2010 via special provisional use." "That special provisional use was approved according to a specific site plan submitted by WAVP to the city." "The commission must now determine if the changes to the WAVP are requesting coincide with the surrounding neighborhood," close quote. So with respect to how the public hearing goes, the Planning and Zoning Committee, Commission is a recommending body. It's not a determining body. Waverly City Council is a determining body. The Board of Adjustment is a determining body. This evening, there will be four public hearings. Each hearing will be held within the established protocol of the commission. The results of this evening's public hearings will be referred to the Board of Adjustment. This meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission is being recorded. Isaac?
Yeah.
Got it?
All right, can you still hear me? Just making sure. Next letter I received is from James and Mary Ellen Brando. I believe I saw them on the call. They are from 201st Street Northeast, Waverly, Iowa. Their letter is as follows. "We would encourage you to approve the amendments requested. The storage building was in the original plans when the present structure was built. Because of financial limitations, the storage building was not erected. The storage for the wagon carrying the flag poles, the flags and the material needed to erect the Flanders Field. Each Memorial Day was lost when the American Legion sold their property. Since that time, the city of Waverly has graciously allowed us to store these items until they no longer had room. Since that time, CMI Road Building Incorporated has graciously allowed us to store these materials. The new building would also allow for wheelchairs, walkers, portable fryers, and grills, picnic tables, ground maintenance equipments, and tools. The new storage building, to be located at the north end of the catering drive, would be used to store tables and chairs for the upper-level dining hall. The lower-level parking lot needs to be extended to create a safer area for the activities as well as safer parking for larger vehicles. The request to extend an emergency access is for risk management. This would provide easier access for emergency vehicles and personnel. Thank you for your consideration." All right, then we have a letter from Bob O'Hare of 100 Fairholme Drive, Waverly, Iowa. He writes, "I would like to give my opinion of the hearing in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The building we would like to build is for storing a trailer for flag poles, a second trailer for the flags, and a third trailer that has the signs that snap on the poles of the veterans' names that goes with the flag. These flags are for the veterans that are buried in Arlington Cemetery. These trailers were stored in a city building until the city tore the building down. They're now stored at CMI in Waverly until they need the space, and then they have to come out. We don't have another location. The decision would have to be made that the Veterans Club would have to turn over the avenue of the flags to the city. Next topic I would like to bring up is the second driveway. This driveway is a safety issue. When there are several cars parked in the lower parking lot, it makes it very dangerous for someone coming through to get to the boat ramp, also for emergency vehicles. Just last week, we had to call the ambulance, and with all the cars parked in the lower parking lot, the ambulance had to back all the way up to the top parking lot to turn around and leave. The time it takes for that sometimes could mean life or death. At last topic, storage building along the west side of the main building, which would be used to store tables and chairs. They are now stored in small rooms that are overflowing and have become a safety issue. If we could put a small building there, that would not block any view, and it would alleviate this problem. Veterans Club has always tried to help with all of the functions here in Waverly. I would like to have the okay to make these changes so that we can continue being a valued part of the city of Waverly." All right, so this next letter comes from Gina Carpenter, who's the general manager, Mallory Hens, Assistant GM, Rochelle Nielsen, Assistant GM, and then Marty Worth, who's event setup. They're all staff employees at the WAVP, is my understanding. If that's incorrect, please somebody correct me there. But their letter is as follows. "To whom it may concern, this letter is to provide information and awareness at the Waverly Area Veterans Post that includes outside buildings for storage and parking lot concerns and safety for all patrons. We, as a staff of the WAVP, would like to have you better understand some of the current storage/safety issues we have when hosting events and regular business operations. The storage is not sufficient throughout the building for meeting our needs. When we have weddings or other events that require the use of our chairs and tables, the group hosting the event must put away the tables and chairs when they are finished using them. This entails stacking of chairs in a closet that does not hold all of them and poses a risk of chairs falling as they are trying to stack them, which could result in an injury. We'd like to have a separate storage facility on the upper level outside of the catering entrance where we can place the chairs on a cart and wheel them out easily. This storage facility could also be used to house janitorial supplies that are currently in our catering kitchen and other seasonal items as needed for decorating or hosting big events. A storage facility on the lower level that is larger than the current one is also needed for outdoor event tables/chairs. It wouldn't be used in conjunction with events pertaining to the use of the grassy area to the river, i.e. outdoor weddings and parties. This would enable us to have a place for them to gather on a patio-type sitting area. This would help accommodate those who have handicap situations, such as wheelchairs or walkers, who would not be able to walk the hill for the event. In this past year, we decided to start hosting parking lot outdoor events. Excuse me. This has become something that has helped our business increase our food sales and provided outdoor games and activities, along with a place for families and pets to be able to enjoy the view and feel comfortable and safe in our current pandemic situation. We have had great responses and requests from the local citizens and our regular patrons to continue doing this. That is, as it is, a service to the community that a lot of other establishments do not and cannot offer. We do block off the parking lot during these events, but in the past have had some safety concerns when those who wish to use the boat dock try to get through parking lot by driving around groups of patrons sitting in chairs or at tables. We have had close calls and do not want to see anyone get hurt, but we also need to let our supporters have the access to the river. We believe that having another driveway to the boat dock on the west side of the WAVP will alleviate these concerns and keep the patrons and citizens safe while attending our events. In a recent incident, we had a patron with some medical issues where the ambulance was called. When the ambulance was preparing to transport the patron, they had to back out between parked cars around the corner as there was no way to turn around with the current parking lot the way it is. We respectfully request you take into consideration the above information in your decision regarding added storage, adding storage facilities and parking driveway enhancements to help us continue to be that business who can provide entertainment and events that service not only veterans but all citizens in and around Waverly. Thank you for your time and consideration." Again, that letter came from staff of the WAVP. I have some shorter comments. James Mormon of 1825 Knight Avenue, Waverly, Iowa. Contacted me via email. He writes, "Please approve the requested changes to enhance the entire city of Waverly. The need for adequate storage for the Veterans Post is needed. Thank you for your consideration." Dennis Muchow, Muchow. Again, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing the last names. 1801 Park Street, Tripola, Iowa. "I am in favor of the four amendments the post would like to make." Bill Hilbert, 107 Shelby Lane, Waverly, Iowa. He contacted me via email. He writes, "I fully endorse the changes to the WAVP. Regards, William Hilbert." Eric Orman of 1676 212th Street, Waverly, Iowa. "I would like to voice my support for the proposed amendments brought forth by the Waverly Area Veterans Post. This is a valuable asset to the city of Waverly, and the improvements sought will be extremely beneficial to both the WAVP, the city of Waverly, and also the patrons." Eddie Wickman, 1004 Ninth Street Northwest. "I would like to voice my support for the WAVP. I think it has been a great asset to Waverly. We have been sons of AmVet members for four years or so. I love taking my family and friends that are visiting there. Great environment and staff. Also, during the recent pandemic, they were there to help with takeout food and family nights outside. The WAVP has only grown since the time we have been going. I would love to see Waverly back a great establishment like this one to honor the vets and Waverly residents. There are a lot of projects not done in town. This is one that should be, one that continues to grow. These minor changes would help them continue to grow. Thank you for your time." Will Kurt, 801 Ninth Street Northwest, Waverly. "I am writing to show my support for the needed enhancements to the WAVP for safety of clients and ease of access by our EMS people for speedy responses and departures. After visiting and holding events in that location for decades, I have seen how these things the WAVP committee has highlighted will help improve that location for our city. Thanks for taking the time to listen to our needs, and please help our organization make this the safest that we can for our customers." Michelle Wheeler, 172 Eagle Ridge Drive. "I would like to voice my support for the proposed amendments brought forth by the Waverly Area Veterans Post. This is a valuable asset to the city of Waverly, and the improvements sought will be extremely beneficial to both the WAVP, the city of Waverly, and the patrons." Travis Kruger of 172 Eagle Ridge Drive. "I would like to voice my support for the proposed amendments brought forth by the Waverly Veterans Post. This is a valuable asset to the city of Waverly. Improvements sought will be extremely beneficial to the WAVP and the community as well." Jim Beam of 1411 Stone Lane, Waverly. "Hello, my name is Jim Beam. I am writing to show my support for approval of the four WAVP usage amendments to the original WAVP use requests. I was extremely involved in the development of the WAVP and served as its first board chairman for four years. I firmly believe that the first four amendments are reasonable, fair to all parties, and will fulfill some of the original intent the WAVP desired but was unable to perform due to cost restrictions. The WAVP has been a blessing to all veterans and to the community of Waverly. Approval of these four amendments will only strengthen these relationships. I am asking for your support and approval of all four of the amendments requested. Thank you." Gary Wood of 205 Maple Avenue. "I am in total support of the additions the WAVP is proposing. The building and grounds addition will greatly enhance the operation and safety of the patrons in the Waverly area. I am asking for your positive consideration concerning this issue." Kelly Wickman, 1004 Ninth Street Northwest, Waverly. "I would like to express my support for the proposed amendments brought forth by the Waverly Area Veterans Post. The WAVP is a valuable asset not only to veterans of our community, but also to the public as a whole in Waverly and the surrounding areas. It is a place that supports our veterans so much. It also is a beautiful location for gatherings for weddings, meetings, funeral meals, and families to gather for dinner. I believe the amendments would be extremely beneficial to both the Waverly Area Veterans Post and our community as a whole." Jan Heineman, 617 Third Street Northwest, Waverly. "I fully support all four amendments requested by the WAVP board. My hope is that the P&amp;Z board will approve all four of them." Lou McDougall, 1514 Martin Avenue, Waverly. "I support the WAVP's request to construct a 30-foot by 50-foot storage building northeast of the current facility." And that is all of the comments that I have from the public.
Okay, a couple of other comments on some of the basic conduct of a public hearing. We've opened the public hearing, but there actually will be four separate public hearings. That way, if all of the petitions are approved, all four go in. But if one, two, three petitions are approved or denied, it doesn't impact the ones that are approved. So the idea was to make sure that if somebody was hung up on one, that it wouldn't destroy the integrity of the overall request. When we open up each of those requests, I'll be asking staff to include any recommendations. Now, you've heard the listing of people who have written in. We'll then invite a representative of the applicant proponent to make comments. That would be somebody who is going to represent WAVP. All testimony, comments, and questions are to be directed to the chair and not to other participants, the applicant, or staff. Planning and Zoning Commission will determine the appropriateness of all questions and where and when to direct them. Public participation. Members of the public will be invited to offer testimony. For purposes of meeting on Zoom, persons desiring to speak, please post your name in the chat, and the zoning administrator will call on you to speak. Some simple rules if you wish to testify during the public hearing. When you come online to speak, state your name and address. Keep your comments as brief as possible. Typically, three minutes is allowed. Depending on the number of speakers in attendance, that limitation may be altered by the chair. And after all members of the audience wanting to speak have spoken, an individual may request recognition for additional comments. I'd like you to keep your comments relevant to the proposal and the issues. Try not to duplicate information that has already been presented. information that has already been presented. We've heard what everyone thinks. The chair will then close the public hearing and further discussion will take place within the commission with commissioners participating, and they may have questions of particular people who have made presentations. Following commission deliberation, a vote may be taken or the public hearing may be continued to a future date. So with that, Isaac, if you'd present the first petition.
Yes, so I'll make one more comment about those that are wishing to speak once we open the public hearing. If you're on your computer, at the bottom of your Zoom screen, if you scroll, put your mouse down there, it should pop up and you should have a lot of different options. If you click the chat, it'll pop up a little Zoom group chat. And then, like Hank said, if you wish to speak, just type your name and then we'll call on you once the current speaker is done. So, as I said, the first amendment is to install a 30-foot-by-50-foot storage building located at the northeast corner of the existing parking lot. The accessory structure would be used for storage of trailers, wheelchairs, maintenance equipment, and other miscellaneous items. As shown on the site plan, you can see the red square drawn in the northeast corner of the parking lot. That's where they're proposing to build it. We do have a building sketch of what it will look like. You can see different sites of how it'll look like depending on what side of the building that you're standing on. Currently, there is a small accessory structure there in order for this building to be constructed. That small accessory structure will be removed from the property. There is another amendment concerning placing an accessory structure in a different spot on the property. We'll get to that when we go to the second amendment. Staff does not have a recommendation for the first amendment.
So with that, if we could hear from the petitioner.
Carl Binning with the Waverly Veterans Post Board. I don't think there's anything that I can say to elaborate on what we'd like to do. It's, the rationale is pretty obvious. Why we need it, if we are to continue with Memorial Day programs that we've had, the flags, we obviously need a place to store. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
At this time, not hearing any questions from the group, and if the commission has questions, they'll ask those. Well, they can ask their questions whenever they want.
We're hitting chat, but we're not. Are you able to hear us now? We were hitting chat.
Yes.
We can, we can hear you.
Say your name.
I am August Waltman, 421 10th Avenue Northwest, Waverly. In looking at the drawing for the building, it says that it's 30 by 50. However, the porch area, I'll call it, but added on to that appears that the footprint is really more like 38 and a half by 50. I was wondering what Isaac considers that in terms of the allocated amount of extra buildings that can be on the site. Last time in October, he said that it could have 2,000 square feet. That obviously makes a difference whether that's a 30 by 50 or a 38 and a half by 50.
So, this is the plan that's been submitted to our department. It states that it's 30 feet by 50 feet. The drawing obviously has been submitted. On that drawing, it does say that it's 30 by 50. So, if that's what they're approved for, that's what, when they ultimately pull the building permit for this structure, that's what we would allow them to build. The total footprint of the building would be 30 feet by 50 feet.
Isaac, clarification that 30 feet would have to include that walkway area that's covered, correct?
That's our understanding of how it'll be built. If that's a misunderstanding, I would invite the WAVP to make that clarification right now so that we know that and the commission can make a recommendation that's pertinent to what they are requesting to build.
The building itself, Mr. Chairman, would be 30 by 50. The porch effect, the veranda, whatever you want to call it, my understanding is, according to the code, is not counted as a square footage for the building. No more than a porch would be for your house. We think that's a necessary enhancement of our programming and our facility. We'd like to put some picnic tables out there for outdoor use.
Oh, this is Stephanie Garner. So, with the extension or the addition to the side, what would be the footprint of that building? 50 by what?
The building, again, is 30 by 50.
We also need to include the extension. So, the entire footprint of the structure would be what? 50 by what?
It's have to be 38. You said it's 38 and a half, so.
So, does anyone have an actual architectural drawing besides elevations? Do you have a, I don't know what you're calling, anyhow, do you have a sketch that is of the footprint that would give you dimensions?
I can say that what we've been, what staff's been given has been included in the packet tonight.
What is, this is Kathy, what is the intended use of that extension? Storage in an open area there, or is that a, is that?
No, it's not storage. It's mainly for picnic tables, outdoor seating for various outdoor activities that we have going on down there, different family functions, weddings.
I'm not sure I asked my question clearly. It appears that there is a roofed area over the, that is an extension, and what is intended to happen under that roof, or is that part enclosed?
It's not enclosed.
It's not enclosed. It's entirely open. It's, it's an outdoor.
Picnic shelter.
Picnic shelter, if you want to call it that. I mean, like I said, it's no more than a porch on a house.
Except the porch on the house, anything that has, that's covered, has to be taken into account. While you may not use, you know, the square footage of the building is one thing, but in terms of the footprint on the plan, you have to include that walkway or park picnic storage.
It's been closed.
It doesn't have to be enclosed. It is, it is covered, and that's why you have What is the material that's on this building? What's the colors?
It will be steel exterior.
This is Stephanie Garner speaking. Will there be electric, water, and heat in that structure?
There will be electric. They don't say any reason for water or heat.
Okay. Will there be a concrete floor? Will there be an interior finished ceiling?
I don't know.
Okay, so the interior will not be, it will be studs, will not be finished?
The interior will not be finished.
Okay, thank you.
One of the concerns that the commission had was how this building was going to relate architecturally to the, what I'm, you know, main building is somewhat of a contemporary looking building, and this looks like a Dutch barn. How are you tying these two together?
Well, outside of the neutral color, earth tone colors that it's going to be, we're not going to put up a brick or a cement structure because we just simply can't afford it. There's a lot of cases around town where accessory building does not come close to matching the original building.
No one asked for it to match, but a gambrel roof hardly ties with your existing building. I mean, there are ways to tie the two buildings together without them being identical, and I don't see any effort has been made to respond to that concern by the
Well, we thought the gambrel roof would break up the roof design rather than just a straight 412 pitch roof where it would be one piece. This would break it up a little bit, so it wouldn't look like a, such a huge roof.
Do you have a site plan? Is there a site plan that shows the footprint of a 30 by 50 building on an actual measured site plan?
We have the sketch of the structure that we have showing on the page right now, and then we have received this, these two documents showing the outline of where the building will be placed on the property, as well as roughly, let's see if I can turn Place, again, it's drawn on a plan showing where the storage building will be placed on the property. Those are all of the information and site plans that staff has received.
Greg Ashby, we're trying to get in. Greg?
Yeah, I was just waiting to be called on. Thanks, Hank. Just wanted to share my thoughts on the structure of the storage building. I don't object to need of the storage building being there. It makes sense, assuming that it fits within the constraints of planning and zoning's vision for how the provisional use is done. I don't feel like the barn-style structure fits in with the whole neighborhood type of thing. The current structure that's there, being a barn, because of its smaller size, it's so much smaller in scale, it's less of, what do you want to say? It doesn't attract as much attention as a building this size. One suggestion I've got is to consider using a clear story roof on there, which would better mimic the roof design of the existing building. The porch on the west side there, personally, I don't see the need for it, but if planning and zoning deems it's okay, then I would go along with it. But they've got plenty of sheltered space for picnic tables and whatnot to be out of the elements there on the north side of the building, plus on their balcony. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Is there any storm water collection at that lower corner of the parking lot that needs to be addressed with the placement of the building where you're showing it?
There is a drain there.
How are you going to keep the water from going in the building? If the drain is right there?
The drain would be the low point.
Where's the drain relationship to the building, the location of the building?
The front of the north edge of the parking lot to west edge of the building.
But then it's underneath the building. It's in the, if it's in the.
The west edge of the proposed structure in the north side of the parking lot.
Mike Bursler, you've asked to come into the discussion. Mike?
Yeah, one question is the cement slab for this building. It looks like on the drawing that that cement slab also extends for the, the open porch. Am I correct in
Yeah, that will be a separate spent, but it will be smended.
Yeah, so, so your cement is larger than 30, 50 in that situation, so. And I agree that I think the idea of storage on-site in your situation is an excellent idea. I just wish it was more comfortable with the building and that we, we had better information about the size of the building because now it's, it's being used in a little larger site. And the idea was for storage, but now we're actually doing storage plus picnics and more social activities, which is a little different function than when we first started the discussion.
You know, you, this is Kathy, you mentioned under that, I'll call it the open area of the porch or whatever the term is, and you mentioned picnic tables and so on. In the wintertime, where will those kinds of things be stored, or are they going to remain outside?
It would be stored inside the storage building.
Currently, they're outside, aren't they? Currently, they're outside.
Yeah, there are picnic tables that right now are stored outside because we don't have room, we don't have any place to put them.
Okay, but, but the intent is that they would be under, under the roof, not sitting outside any longer during the winter season. Is that correct?
The intent is to be inside the building.
Yeah.
Storm inside. Storm inside the building during the winter.
I think that's, I don't know, personally, I think that's kind of an important thing. I mean, there's the care of the tables, of course, but it's a bit unsightly, I think, perhaps for that area to have those tables if they were stored all winter outside there.
At the risk of muddying the water, what if we were looking at a building? At the risk of muddying the water, what if we were looking at a building that would be up to 50 feet by 40 feet? And that would include any overhangs, anything of that nature, but it would give some flexibility to, your ability to create something. Again, at the risk of muddying the water, I'd like to have, have your opinion.
This is Stephanie Garner. So if you increase the size of that building to 50 by 40, that means the height of the building is going to have to also be increased, which, you know, right now it looks like it's maybe 10 foot 4 inches. I'm kind of having a hard time believing that's actually 10 foot 4 inches to the peak of that roof because the height of that garage door is, is what? If you're going to drive a vehicle in there, it's going to probably be at least eight foot, eight or nine foot tall.
10 foot is the sidewall.
Okay, that's the sidewall. So what is it to the peak on the end? On the north or the south end?
From the, from the ground elevation would be about 20 feet.
Okay. So that 20 feet would, once it's 40 by 50, have to be increased?
No.
No.
If you stayed with the same architectural design, you're going to have to probably have more than 20 foot.
No.
Okay.
If you look at the left elevation, which would be, the way we're going to construct it would be the south.
And what I'm talking about is if you increase the size of the building to include the alcove, the porch, to the size that Hank proposed, a 40 by 50, therefore, the peak, the ridge would have to be elevated.
We're not going to do that. We don't want to, we don't want any bigger building than the 30 by 50 for inside storage.
So just to kind of clarify, I think what Hank was saying, I think that he was suggesting, maybe suggest increasing the total footprint of the building. So it'd be a 30 by 50 building with an overhang on the western side of the building up to 10 feet from the building. So essentially, it would be laid out as what they've submitted, the drawings that they've submitted. That's what we would be going off of. That's how the building would look. The actual storage component of the building would be 30 foot by 50 foot. And then the overhang on the western side of the building would be up to 10 feet projecting from the storage building.
I'm just, I guess one of the thoughts that goes through my mind here is that if that gets extended, you know, to the 10 feet beyond that, it really increases the amount of space for outdoor activities. And I'm just wondering if this creates any kind of a risk for additional noise, more party space or more event space? We are in a residential area.
Well, my concern is the fact that they're adding another use. I mean, we were talking, you know, a storage building that then gets to be a storage building, but a larger storage building. But now it's a storage building with covered dining area.
We, we use the current parking lot for outdoor activities now. All it would do would be to allow them to set a picnic table under a roof in the shade or in the inclement weather, they could be at least under a roof rather than out in the middle of the parking lot.
So, this is Kate Payne. There's a couple of unknowns here that I think that we're just kind of working around. And we've been at it for an hour and there's three more public hearings. So I just want to say that I really think that it would be helpful to fully understand the footprint of the building on the site. Scaled drawing on a site plan that really addressed the issues with water because the water's going to come down that hill. What you're showing is dropping the building on an inlet to the storm, and that doesn't seem like that works. So I think that there are definitely issues in terms of where the building is sitting. Additionally, I think that the general feeling that I have and that I think I'm hearing from other people is that in general, it would be nice if the building had a, just something of a relationship to the architecture of the original building. Now, I have to put a caveat out there. I was involved in the design of the original building, so I'd like to just say that I don't want to have too much skin in that statement. But I do think that it would be nice if we had a little bit more information on how it's really going to look and react to the site and that all of the site issues have been solved. Additionally, I think it would probably help everyone if we understood what you were going to do with the tree in that area and any screening that might happen on the site plan.
In terms of procedure, is there anyone from the audience that has anything else said like to contribute? If I don't hear any, we're going to then go into a commission gathering and commission members can always ask questions of people who are in the audience if they choose. But we'll close the public hearing.
I tried to hit the chat and I don't know how to do this. I'm not a techie person. Can you hear me?
And what is your name, please?
Barbara Waltman, 421 10th Avenue Northwest. I'm wondering what the highest elevation of this shed is and how that compares to the elevation of the shed that is there currently.
As I said before, the proposed building would, from ground elevation, would be about 20 feet tall. The existing small storage structure we have there now is probably 10, 10 and a half.
So in regard to that, it is going to inhibit the vision to the river from people that live in the neighborhood?
No.
And that enjoy at least being able to see the river to some degree at this point?
I don't, I guess I don't know who would be impacted.
We, well, you can, you can see where homes are located along here and who would, that would interfere with the view. And also, I know in the October hearing, you were talking about the new development. It definitely would make a difference for them also.
Trees. Actually, the east side of the proposed building would be almost entirely screened by existing trees from the eastern property.
I don't think there are any trees left there.
Yes, there's a lot of trees.
Are there any other comments to the commission?
This is Greg Gash. One quick one about the tree screening. There's the, the lot that is directly, if you look at Whitetail Bluff and the cul-de-sac up there, there's a lot line that goes basically, if memory serves me correctly, right off the engine of the west edge of the cul-de-sac. And there's a lot there kind of between where this building's going and Carrie's school. And that particular property is going to see this, you know, right out their backyard.
They will, if they don't want to, if they don't do any screening on their own property, they'll see a beautiful drainage pond.
Yeah, you're right. That's part of it too. But that doesn't take up 20 feet.
Okay, are there any other, are there any other comments from people in the audience? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and commission, let's talk.
My concern is that, you know, when we started out, I understand the need for the storage building and I don't have an issue with that. I don't even have an issue with the size. My concern is that when we started this, it was just a storage building and then it was like, oh, yeah, by the way, we're going to move the existing storage building up between the main building and the neighbors, you know, which was kind of, we just discovered. Now we come in and they've added this porch onto the west side. It just seems like every time they, you know, every time we sat and talked with them, we keep finding out additional things that weren't revealed before. I also have a concern with, we, I thought we stated pretty adamantly that we felt there should be some tie between this building because of its size and the main building. Even just, we talked about possible ways they could do it with the, with the roof. And it just seems to me that they have completely ignored our concerns.
Say from other members of the commission?
This is Heidi Solheim. So I totally understand the need for storage. What I keep coming back to is the original provisional special use that was granted back in 2010 in reading through the notes. I mean, those are pretty explicit at that time that there should be, I guess, limited impact to the neighborhood. And by putting a significantly sized metal pole shed, even if it is designed a little bit nicer to, you know, to look more like a barn or something, it's still, to me, outside the, the expectations for provisional use, we've really made a more significant impact on the neighborhood and changed the design and aesthetics of that whole area. That's really my concern is when the first use was granted, this is taking it significantly farther. Even if it was in the original plans, that wasn't the plan that was approved by the city council at that time. And I do really feel there will be an impact to the new subdivision that's going in and again, the neighbors around that area. And I, you know, I totally understand the need for storage, but when that area was selected, it was a difficult position to start with for the community and for the neighborhood. And to potentially cause more harm or more challenges for the surrounding neighbors, I think is going to the extreme from the special provisional use.
What about others?
Uh, this is Stephanie Garner. I probably have some of the same, very same feelings that the other folks have expressed. I also am concerned about drainage. I would like to see a sketch that includes all the dimensions, that includes the footprint. I want to see the elevation of all the sides. I want to see the pitch of the roof. I'm also concerned about the agricultural look of the building. And like Mary said, it does not mimic the existing building. I'd like to see something that is more aesthetically pleasing and follows more in suit with the residential development. And I'm concerned about the change in use as was previously expressed. But I totally get, I'm all in favor of more storage.
Thanks, Stephanie. What about others?
I think the added, I will call it event use to that storage building is questionable only from this perspective. We're also looking in a subsequent amendment at expanding the use of the outside area and parking lot for events. And my concern would be moving additional events and corresponding noise, et cetera, to the neighborhood.
Any others?
I have one comment, which is I, I know we're looking at each of these things in isolation from each other, but I, I don't think we, I don't think it's appropriate really to look at them in isolation of each other. I think that the storage building and the other building being relocated to the end of the catering drive and enlarging the parking lot for additional outdoor space, it all works together. And I really am struggling with why we would even consider them and approve one without looking at all together. That's my bigger concern.
Anyone else?
Just a question, I guess I do have a question for the, for the Veterans Post folks. How important is this extension or this porch? You know, what, that, that of course is new to the, to the discussion tonight, but how important is that in the whole scheme of things here?
This is Larry Buco, also on the board here. It's a veranda area, it's not a porch to begin with. But it's also, we already use that area down by the river. We have weddings down there. And then this is really a matter of how we can fully utilize our site. It's not going to be a huge crowd and mob type situation. There'll be just a very few picnic tables here, so it's low numbers that we already have and we're using the parking lot, this would be out of the parking lot. It allows us to, to have more enhancements to what we're doing out in the, in the open area. Up to this point, we've utilized the building, but we have a lot of the site left that, that really we could utilize better. Boats come in, use the harbor. We also have, like I mentioned, weddings down below. There could be family reunions, there could be a lot of events and activities going on down there. So there are a lot of things that we could utilize this site for other than just in the building.
But, you know, I guess if I look at the original intent of the special provisional use, expanding the use of the outside area wasn't, I don't think, a part of the original plan for, for that space, that it, it really was approved in the spirit of being good neighbors, limiting noise, and being cautious about intrusions into the, into the neighborhood so that ever-expanding use of the outside, I'm not sure I'm in agreement with that for the special provisional use.
Well, I guess too, I think we, we understand, you know, the pandemic has kind of pushed you outside to do some of that stuff. And, but that was thought of as being temporary. And the impact of these additional activities outside in the long term is something that the neighbors really hadn't signed on to.
I think the only other observation that I want to make is that if you go to Google 搜寻 and look at, it's the old, it's the previous building when you go to Google搜寻. But the hill does drop off a lot. I don't actually think you would see the storage building from this place. You would really have to really look for it. And the bulk of the reason you would appear to be to the west of the building.
Kate, we missed most of that. You're breaking up. Kate, we missed most of that. You're breaking up.
Oh, sorry. If you look at Google Street View, it still has the old building there, but the site drops off dramatically. And I, I actually don't think that you would see too much of this building from the, I mean, it's different now because the grade's been changed. But I don't think that the storage building is going to have a huge impact on what you will see from the street. But I do think that it would be nice if the building had an architectural relationship to the building. I think that that would really help from the neighborhood kind of point of view. Hank, you're.
Say something. I see your lips moving, but I don't hear anything.
Thank you, Rich. It's a finger problem. Are there any other opinions from the members of the Commission? And if not, are you ready to vote?
Hank, I guess my, my thought is that I don't have a lot of concern regarding the architectural presentation of the building. I think it's going to fit in up there. You've got people that park their campers in their, in their driveways around there now. I find it interesting, we keep bringing up that, you know, we're concerned about the neighborhood, yet the neighborhood isn't online or even presented arguments here tonight that they have a problem with the building. I don't think 30 by 50 is a problem. I think it fits within the site. The drawing that, that Isaac had, you know, this thing is not too large. But I am concerned with putting additional concrete out there for this roof and, and moving things outside. I 100% support the storage of 30 by 50 building as designed. I think it fits perfectly. I think their little porch area might be a attempt to improve the, the facade and appearance, but, you know, I really think that we don't need to expand the entertainment venue, venue up there. And if they want to make it a 30 by 50 building, I'd, I'd support it right now and say we should approve it.
Rich, I, I'll take exception. We do have a neighbor who is concerned about the appearance of the, of the storage building.
Go on.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we're talking about a vote on a 30 by 50 building. That's the total structure, because that's what's in the petition.
Are we voting on this building or just a neutral 30 by 50 building?
About a building not to exceed 30 by 50?
Okay, if that's the case, then I, I just want to make sure I know what I'm voting on. Does that mean that this veranda area would need to come back as a special request? As another special request? Is that what that would mean?
Well, unless, unless you think that the veranda area is not a part of the building. And then they'd have to get another special provisional use to put that. Once a, a site plan is made, the benefactor of that site plan is, is going to be in a position where they can do nothing. For example, the small storage building should not be there. Maybe they got a building permit for it, but special provisional use was specific to what you could do with that. It's the way the code is written. So if, if we give them the go-ahead to build a 30 by 50 building, that's it. That's the footprint, total footprint.
Uh, this is Stephanie. My question is, do they understand that 30 by 50 includes the entire structure, be it the, what we've all called a porch, and the enclosed portion? All of that needs to be 30 by 50. So what the drawing is, the sketch is, from what I've heard from the Veterans Post description, does not, that porch is not included in the 30 by 50, in their understanding.
Well, that, that's their understanding, but I think the, the way, if I'm correct, the code reads is the structure is the structure. And it's, it would be part of the structure if the porch were included.
Yes. Thank you.
With that suggestion, though, does that mean the building can really look like whatever as long as it's 30 by 50? So it could go back to just a basic pole shed or any other style? Because the current drawing would not be able to be represented in 30 by 50 unless it was significantly shrunk for interior storage.
I don't, you know, I don't really know how to answer that question specifically, but I, I do understand what Rich is saying, that I'm not sure that it is that architectural design that, that is what would hang me up. I, I feel that they will, from what I've heard, show us the general shape and so on, but they're going to work hard to, to make it a presentable building. It isn't going to be in their interests to have a horrible-looking storage shed. And so, you know, my, I understand the need for storage. I, I would support a 30 by 50 structure.
I think the drainage thing has to be dealt with. I think that that inlet is going to mess up where it lands. I don't see how it works.
And I guess I have concerns about what will, what will end up getting built, considering every time we, this comes up, we find out more information, and I don't think we have all the answers yet.
Really, too many of them.
We can't. Jim Beam had a question on the chat. Do you want to address that?
Well, the question was whether, if there wasn't a roof, did we still have a slab of concrete there? If that, if there wasn't a roof over it, then you just would have a 30 by 50 building. It wouldn't be counted as part of the building, but you would increase your impervious footprint.
Put a sidewalk around it later. Yeah, that's, that's all it is. Cover sidewalk.
Hank, I call the question.
Give, give me just a second with Isaac here. Mary, if you would state the motion, please.
I can't. I don't have it in front of me. My move, Planning and Zoning Commission, recommend approval of Amendment 1. Is it a, is this one?
The, the motion that's in the, in the packet.
I know, but I don't have it in front of me.
Is, I'm sorry?
I, I can read the motion if you'd like. So the, the motion that we have in the packet is to move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, but you did say approval of Amendment 1 to the Waverly Area Veterans Post Special Provisional Use Permit to the Board of Adjustments. Amendment 1, as written in the agenda memo, is to install a 30-foot by 50-foot storage building located at the northeast corner of the existing parking lot. I think that the Commission needs to be very specific on whether or not that 30 by 50 storage building includes the overhang area, the verandas, the Veterans Post has said, or it does not include that. I think the Commission should be very specific on whether or not that's included in the motion before we move forward and take a vote.
What do you need from that? The clarification on the motion?
Mary, I couldn't understand you.
I said, do you, do you need me to clarify the motion as to what is in the 30 by 40, 30 by 50 footprint?
I would clar, sorry, I would clarify it as either motion to approve a 30 by, 30-foot by 50-foot storage building, or motion to approve 30-foot by 50-foot storage building with up to a 10-foot projection from the west side of the storage building.
No, the forearm or the footprint, the total footprint, 30 by 50.
Okay. So just to make sure before we vote, the motion is move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of Amendment 1 to install a 30-foot by 50-foot storage building. Total square footage of the storage building would be 30-foot by 50-foot, located at the northeast corner of the existing parking lot, to the Waverly Area Veterans Post Special Provisional Use Permit to the Board of Adjustments.
Yes.
We have any questions about the motion?
Could it include anything that deals with the drainage issue?
Aren't those going to have to be dealt with anyway?
Yeah, I was just going to make that comment, Hank, that that will be taken care of as a part of the design when they go to actually do the construction, that if there's a, the drainage has to be done. All you got to do is just move it to the west. Right.
Okay.
Can they not, they can't hear me?
No, they cannot. You're on.
Uh, this is Larry Buchholz again. The drainage will be taken.
Sure you can.
You can.
The rules. That's fine. I, I just wanted to ask the question. Go ahead.
You, you can answer the question.
Yeah, I understand. I got my answer. My question is answered.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Hank, do we have a second? Yes, I seconded it.
Doug, Doug seconded it. Roll call vote.
Doug Ben Scooter.
Yes.
Rich Dean.
Yes.
Mary French.
No.
Stephanie Garner. Stephanie Garner.
No.
David Schuser.
Yes.
Kathy Olson.
Yes.
Heidi Solheim.
No.
Hank Begelman.
Yes.
Kate Payne.
Um, I'm here. No.
Uh, my tally is five yeses, four noes.
Now, understand the protocol here. This will still be forwarded to the Board of Adjustment, and they will have the recorded vote, and they will take it as the, as the item, and they'll have the benefit of the discussion that we've had here this evening. Let's move to Amendment number two.
All right, the Second Amendment. Hold on, let me share my screen right quick. So this is, the Second Amendment is to construct a accessory structure located on the western side of the Waverly Area Veterans Post main or primary building. The accessory structure will be 12-foot by 20-foot and will be used to store tables, chairs, and other items that are installed to the use of the property. Those tables, chairs, and other items that this building will be used to store are currently being stored in hallways, unto my recollection of the previous meeting. They're currently being stored in hallways and miscellaneous areas inside the Veterans Post main facility. Again, staff does not have a recommendation for this amendment.
Okay, from the petitioner, can we hear from you?
Earl Benning, this would be a entirely a portable building, almost identical to our, the small structure that's on the northeast corner of the parking lot now. But we can't move that one up there because the doors are all in the wrong places. So this would be a structure, again, a portable structure, very similar to what we have now.
Earl, what are the dimensions of that existing structure now?
12 by 16.
Okay.
We have to go to 20 to get our eight-foot tables in.
Okay, is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak to this amendment?
Yes, I would. This is Greg Gash. And I live adjacent, directly to the west. Most of you know that, of the Veterans Post. I've got no objection to this storage building. I do have a question for the Post, is where, what will you do with the dumpster that's there for that level?
It's drawn right on the diagram.
Hide it behind the building.
Hide it, we'll hide it behind the building, so you won't see it.
Very good. Thank you.
So does that actually move the dumpster, or is that where the dumpster is located right now?
That's where the dumpster is located right now. It would move at about six feet south.
This is another metal building like the, like the other one? I mean, it's.
No, it's exactly like the other building. Same company, same design, wood. It's a wood building.
But with metal siding and a gambrel roof or a flat, or a?
It would be just like the building that's there now. Be a gambrel roof.
Earl, quick question. On the sketch that was sent in with this, the dumpster is positioned to the south of this building. And what I think I heard you say earlier was that it would be to the north.
No.
No, they can't dump it then.
So the drawing is correct?
As far as I know.
What are the, are there implications of this structure being, taking up part of the parking lot, which will be then used as justification for additional changes to either the parking lot or to that service road?
There is no parking lot there. That's strictly a service.
What are you going to do with the landscaping?
What?
Landscaping.
Landscaping. August Waltman, 421 10th Avenue Northwest. The orientation of that building would put it into the 45-foot setback area that was agreed to when this original special provisional use was granted. You had said that you would stay 45 feet back from the property line. The way it's drawn now, the concrete edge there of that. The way it's drawn now, uh, the concrete edge there of that area, I believe, is forty-five feet back, so the building would extend into that forty-five foot area, is that correct?
Bill, we're gonna drag it up in his place, buddy. Can't you drink? Can't you drink your coffee out of the counter?
Is it?
So, to kind of address the question that was just posed, this was the, um, site plan that the Veterans Post, uh, Special Provisional Use was approv- was based off of and approved back in two thousand and ten, um, when they were initially issued their special provisional use. As you can see on the site plan, they have, um, some greenage, um, uh, green screen along the western side of their property line. Uh, with this new accessory structure, the twelve foot by twenty foot, um, it would encroach upon the forty-five feet, as he stated, which is part of the reason why they are, uh, needing an amendment to the special provisional use. So if this was approved, it would be approved as the, the site plan that they provided for the accessory structure.
Exactly how far does it extend in? There's no dimensions on their drawings.
The, the drawing is to scale. If I'm not mistaken, the curb on the west side of the Catering Drive to our property line is fifty feet.
This is Barb Waltman, uh, four twenty-one, Tenth Avenue Northwest. It is forty-five feet from the west edge of the concrete on the Catering Drive to the neighbors' lot line. So definitely this twelve by twenty structure would, uh, encroach on that forty-five foot area that was guaranteed to the neighbors would stay, would stay there.
So again, um, what is being presented here, the twelve by twenty, this is where they're, um, proposing to place the building. Um, if this amendment were approved, it would be allowed to be placed in this exact area. Um, if the Veterans Post knows exactly how far off the Catering Drive, um, the western edge of this accessory structure would be, um, that would be great, and we can, uh, kind of base it off of there. Um, however, I understand that the forty-five feet, um, was in the original special provisional use, but if, again, if this is approved, um, it would supersede, um, that, uh, original special provisional use, again, because this would be an amendment. Um, then I also say that, um, Mike Bursler has, uh, posted in the chat that he has a question for the commission.
And still I can answer my question on how far it hangs over, how far is that? I mean, okay, the drawing is to scale, but I don't have a scale in front of me.
Either, either way, we would create a due condition for the site plan.
Right.
That's, that's what the amendment would be about, and so it might encroach on that forty-five foot, uh, lane that is supposed to be in plants.
So, Veterans Post, do you know how far off of the Catering Drive the accessory structure will, uh, be? How far, um, to the west will that accessory structure extend from the Catering Drive?
As it's drawn right there, it's about five feet, but again, it's a portable building.
What does that mean?
You have wheels on it?
We can move it. No, it does not gonna have wheels on it.
Is there, is it, is it, um, located as far east as possible?
Getting the table rack in there would be a-
Yeah, you, uh, rolling our carts out of the tables, out of the, uh, existing facility, we need a, a little bit of room there to maneuver, but it could be shoved a little bit probably to the east.
Well, that was my question, because if you've got it drawn to scale, it looks like you've got twenty feet from the building to the, the new building that you're adding, the mobile building.
That would cover the door.
No, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. It's about fifteen feet.
So you could move it, is it possible to move it five feet so that you stay outside the forty-five feet and you, that changed it?
What are the carts, about ten foot long?
Oh, any, anything is, is possible, but it would, uh, make it difficult to get, uh, eight foot tables on a cart into the door on the east side of that proposed building, from our facility building, door.
I suppose we could, I suppose we could come more south, we could harder move it.
So Mike Bursler, I had been recognized for a couple of questions, so maybe this is a good time. Please. Two things, we had discussion, a fair amount of discussion in the last building that it complement the, uh, the present, uh, major facility. I don't hear much of that on this, and yet it's really the ones that the neighbors on the west side are going to visualize the very most. But it's gonna be a more basic building, it sounds like, that concerns me a little bit. The encroachment is a little bit concerning, and then the third thing is the, the drawing that showed the greenery, um, it's very minimal, uh, in that, um, northwest, uh, corner, um, between several of the neighbors, uh, and the, 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 the veterans, the W A V P building. And so I would encourage, if we're putting another building there, um, that it be slightly, I'm concerned about the encroachment, and I think there ought to be the greenery as depicted on the drawing, um, far more significant than what I think it is currently. Mr. Gash or someone else may want to give more direction as to what he's viewing there, but that's a concern I have.
Uh, electrical lines?
No, it's twelve foot from that shrub grave on the building. On our building, it's twelve foot from that.
So Greg Gash asked a question within the chat, um, about the electrical code, um, that would be part of, uh, if this amendment is approved, that once the building permit is pulled, um, the, uh, Breamer County Building Department is the one that enforces electrical code, as the electric code is under the building code. I believe that they should have enough space there, but not being a certified building inspector, I don't want to answer that for sure, but, uh, they would be required to meet that, uh, setback as needed, and that would be enforced by the Breamer County, um, building inspectors.
Any other comments from the folks in the audience?
I, I think that we need to know what this is gonna look like. I, I think that color matters, I think that shape matters, I think that its relationship to the other building matters. I think that this whole premise for the design of this building and allowing it to be there was on screening it from the neighbors, and I see no effort to do that. With this, this one is worse than the other one. I don't object honestly to the other one in the same way. This one, I, again, I feel like the whole thing to be, should have been looked together as one thing. You're, you're addressing the whole site with these four amendments, and it doesn't make sense to me to look at them in isolation.
I echo Kate's comments about the appearance of the building. Essentially the same comments I made on the thirty by fifty building.
I do have a, a concern about the encroachment, it's, you know, it's a little bit here, it's a little bit there, um, and I, I, I don't feel like we have good, um, measurements there of, uh, exactly where this, uh, would potentially fall into that encroachment area.
Question for the W A V P, are you intending to have a concrete slab under this portable building?
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
Mary.
Oh, okay, sorry, Mary.
It's okay.
No.
How are you gonna handle the difference, you've got part of it on the concrete slab and part of it not? Correct?
Same elevation.
Okay, do we have anyone else in the audience who has something they want to say? In hearing none, we're going to then go to the commission, and members of the commission, let's have this discussion.
I'm, I'm, you know, personally, I'm thinking in the absence of additional information, I'd be in favor of tabling this part of it.
I believe that was Kathy?
Yes.
I would, I would go along with Kathy, I am not, I'm confused why we have a portable building. It makes no sense, it ought to be on concrete, you're gonna get heaving, uh, you're gonna get, uh, vermin underneath it. Uh, I think we ought to table this portion until we get additional information on it.
Is that a motion?
I'd make that as a motion.
Second.
It, it's just, this part of it, it doesn't go through. We'd do a double check with our, our attorney. If we table this, um, is there any impact on any of the others? I think that's part of the reason why we had made the decision to put this in four parts, so that if any part did not get passed, the others could be, uh, be acted on.
Well, I think you, if, if you, if they voted, or if they, they table this part, it's a separate thing, you've, you've made that clear from the beginning.
Yep. I thi- I think so too, just wanted to confirm it. Okay. We have a motion and a second to, uh, table this, uh, the motion on the amendment. Let's do a roll call.
Before we do the roll call, who, I have Rich Dane as, um, proposing to table the issue, who is the second?
Kathy.
Kathy Olson.
Perfect. All right, let me get my sheet here. All right, so this is motion to table the issue. Rich Dane?
Yes.
Mary French?
Yes.
Stephanie Garner?
Yes.
Uh, David Huzer?
No.
Kathy Olson?
Yes.
Heidi Solheim?
Yes.
Hank Bagelman?
Yes.
Kate Payne?
Yes.
Doug Ben Scooter?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
Hey, thank you, let's go to, uh, Amendment Number Three. This is the amendment on the north parking lot.
Um, Amendment Three is to extend the parking lot located on the northern side of the Waverly Area Veterans Post, uh, main building, eight feet to the north. Parking lot extension would allow for a larger area for activities to take place in the northern parking lot, as well as allow for more space for larger vehicles to park. Excuse me, uh, the Veterans Post has already, um, stated that they, uh, are using this area for activities, uh, throughout, um, this last, uh, summer season, summer, fall, spring season, um, they'd like to extend it, um, to just add for a little bit more activity area, as well as, um, easier maneuverability when parking and, uh, general driving in that, um, that parking lot area. Again, staff has no recommendation on the amendment.
From the commu-, uh, from the proponent, um, any comments?
Nothing other than what's already been said, it's a, it's a safety issue, uh, as well as, uh, um, giving a little more area for, uh, family activities.
Okay, folks in the audience, any comments that you'd care to make?
Hank, to be fair, I'd like to say something about this, uh, request.
Who is this?
This is Bill Wurder.
Yes, sorry.
From the beginning, when I worked with the post about putting the, uh, sanitary sewer through here, um, this was something that, uh, we supported from the beginning, supported their request for this type of an extension of the parking lot to give it more room for maneuverability and parking. Um, so, eh, to be fair, um, we did support this from the beginning as staff.
Thank you, Bill.
There's kind of a slab there already, am I correct on that? And does this then go eight foot out from that? Is that what we're, uh, talking?
Correct, there is an existing parking lot on the north side of the building, this would simply, uh, extend that, uh, section of parking lot, eight feet to the north.
Okay, but isn't there already another, uh, slab or something there with, um, I think in the summer, I recall seeing some picnic tables or something, I can remember, but, but it, it already extends how far past the curb? It's a raised area.
Eddie, I think that's-
No, it's a flag burning pit, and it's all beyond the end of the entry.
Uh, this is Greg Gash, Kathy, there, there's a patio there, and this past fall, the Veterans Post already pulled up all the patio paper blocks there, so there's, uh, we know concrete that goes north of the curb.
Okay. So it would be extending eight feet of concrete beyond the existing curb?
Is it gonna, is it gonna remove the curb and gutter and push it to the north eight feet, or are you-
Yes, exactly.
Correct.
So instead of a sixty-two foot wide parking lot, you're gonna have a s- uh, seventy-foot parking lot?
Exactly.
What, whatever the parking lot is now, it's be eight feet more.
Okay.
Is this red area on the north side of the parking lot that marked, supposed to represent eight feet?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Pretty small distance. I don't have a problem with it.
I'm sorry, Rich, I apologize.
I just said I don't have a problem with it.
Replacing the curb and gutter, I, I think I asked that, but could you clarify?
Yes, yes.
Now, this, this is probably a silly question, but thinking fut- futuristic, is there a reason for eight feet as opposed to ten feet or twelve feet or whatever? What, what, what's kind of the driver for eight feet?
Because we don't want to take down it, and don't want to take our emergency vehicles.
It's not eighteen foot, we could still keep our patio, uh, fire pit there, and still keep our lawn area, uh, flag burning pit there, uh, around the papers.
Okay.
It just seemed like a happy medium, I mean, I-
Can you-
We didn't want to take up any more of the grass area than what we really thought we needed for safety to, to get vehicles in and out of the parking lot.
Yeah, I think that's especially true with, uh, so many of the pickup trucks that now seem to have a, a longer wheelbase. And that would, hav- having eight feet would give them an additional four feet on each side, uh, just to help that issue.
Currently, what's the layout there? Currently, what's the layout there? Is it a line of parking on the north and a line on the south with the driveway in between? Or is it just parking on the south side?
Parking on both sides.
Okay.
The ADA parking is on the north side?
Yep.
I mean, the south side, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, there's enough room to do a 20-foot parking spot on the north side.
Wide parking lot from curb to curb, according to the site plan.
And I think when this was all built, all of the parking slots were wider than the standard slots. So the width of it isn't going to be changed, but the depth of the parking slots would be enhanced.
Would this change, would that eliminate or at least significantly reduce the issues with the emergency vehicles? That they would have an opportunity to turn around and possibly not need another driveway, which would extremely encroach on the neighbors?
No, if there's vehicles parked there, there's still, there still would not be room to turn an ambulance around in there.
Or a fire truck.
Or a fire truck.
But the fire department must have approved this plan, that they can get the access they need. They have to approve the plan before you can, you know, that you have access to all areas of the building from a fire truck. And as far as an ambulance, why don't you just mark off one of the parking spaces as "do not park here," and you could back up delivery vehicles there. When you've got an event, you keep it open, and that's open for the ambulance.
While we're on this topic, I do have a letter from the Waverly Volunteer Fire Department that I'd like to read. It's addressed from Bryce McKenzie, the Waverly Fire Chief. He writes, "To whom it may concern, I'm writing on behalf of the Waverly Fire Department to express our support of the Waverly Area Veteran Post's desire to extend their lower parking area to the north. With their large charcoal grill and main kitchen services located in the lower northwest corner of the facility, this driveway extension would expedite our access if the need should ever arise. Secondly, this extension would eliminate weaving through their parking lot and would grant us a more direct route to their river access should we ever have an emergency on the northern part of the Cedar River." We'll add that that's addressing amendment four, the access drive. But he continues, "We find this project to be of great value to the Waverly Fire Department. I urge you to support their projects. Respectfully, Bryce McKenzie."
So here's, this to me is an example of what Kate was talking about, if these are viewed separately. Because that road on the west side there, for me personally, is a real problem. And in the event that, I'm not suggesting how the commission vote, but in the event that that did not pass, would it then have an impact on what you did with the northern part of the parking lot in order to enhance maneuverability and access to the river?
Let's see, before you get an answer to that, are there any other comments from the people in the audience?
Yeah, this is Greg Gash. I just want to let you know that I support moving the parking lot. And as I sit here in my den, I can see it from where I'm sitting.
August Waltman, 421 10th Avenue Northwest. I understood in the October meeting that one of the reasons requesting to extend the parking lot was to have more space for outside entertainment area. Now you're just talking about safety. Is there a plan to, in fact, increase the amount of activity on that north side? And if so, is there going to be additional screening to accommodate the additional distance out to protect from sound and sight?
Okay, I'm assuming that's directed to the, the AVP leadership?
Yeah, we don't have any ideas on bringing a rock band in there. It's the normal family activities that we have there, which the pandemic has kind of forced us to move some things outside that we hadn't done before. It's just a safer environment for those activities, as, again, as well as giving us a little more room to maneuver the pickups in the parking lot. As Mr. Chairman mentioned, the trucks are a little bit longer than his Mustang. But we have had, there have been some accidents in there from when exiting, backing up out of a parking lot. There's been some police reports, so the need is there.
One of the things that I'm reading in this is that this particular amendment or request hasn't changed one bit from what was presented in October. It's, it's the same request, and for the same reasons, including the activities that are being held, the family nights, writings, those kinds of things. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Any other comments from the audience?
Jim Beam, 1411 Stone Lane, Waverly. A question on this diagram that we're looking at, is the rectangle on the east side right adjacent to the expansion of the parking lot, the outline of the new shed?
Yes.
With or without the patio?
Without.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the audience?
Mike Burscher, I would, I agree with the expansion. I think it's reasonable. I, I am interested to see, is this parking lot going to be adequate for ambulance and firemen if there is not the other drive-through on the west side? And if that's iffy, then I think maybe even expanding it, or at least on the east side a bit more, somehow to create a better turnaround, if it'll be adequate without that. But I think, I think you have to entertain both thoughts a little bit, just to make sure, in case the west side is not approved, which I would have a concern with, that you've got an adequate ability for emergency use in that back parking lot.
Well, the emergency first responders had already approved that parking lot without the, the road, proposed road on the west. So giving them the eight feet will just make, give them more room. So, that shouldn't be an issue with either the emergency, the fire, or the ambulance.
Good, thank you.
Okay, we're going to bring the meeting back to the commission, discussion within the commission.
This is Stephanie Garner. I have a couple of questions. So, am I correct that the depth of that parking lot would now be 70-foot if they added the eight-foot?
I'm going to answer that because I have a site plan in front of me. Yes, the original drawings show the parking lot as being 62 feet wide. Now, I don't know that it was built that way, but...
That was the plan. So, next question, the depth of each parking space would be what?
Well, that's a striping issue as opposed to, I mean, they can stripe it any way they want.
Where I'm going with that is, how much space do you need for the turning radius of an ambulance or a fire truck? And if you had vehicles parked on the north end and on the south end, would the remaining open space be enough space for ambulance or fire truck to turn?
No.
No way a fire truck can turn around back there. It would have to back out.
The fire truck, you're right, but the ambulance, possible?
Maybe, yeah. If there were parking spaces that were, there is a, you know, there's a, the drive is designed so that it, it gives you an opportunity to have a bit of a turnaround if you use some of the ADA space, the parking space and stuff.
Well, another question. If, since we're also going to be considering in the next issue, a potential other driveway, would it make sense to consider, instead of adding eight-foot to the north of this parking lot, perhaps adding more than that, that would then allow for an ambulance to turn and for more maneuverability for a potential fire truck? The reason we're stopping at eight-foot instead of 10, 12?
I think length is the bigger issue. Is the eight feet going to go the whole length like the drawing shows? Or is it eight feet of where the curb and gutter is on the existing parking lot?
But if you, and also, if you did, made a driveway wide enough for a fire truck to turn around without encroaching on the parking spaces, you're going to be halfway down in the water.
I don't think turning a fire truck around is ever going to happen back here. I would agree. Yeah, I would agree.
Other questions from the commission or comments?
I think the question, a question that still remains out there is, what if, I mean, I understand the, the desire for more safety and mitigating risk and all that kind of thing, but in the event, I just, I see a connection between the decision on the road on the west and the decision on the parking lot, potentially.
I would disagree with you, Kathy. I think they could be, you know, considered separately.
Bill, they should or should not be?
They can be.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just don't want to get in a situation where, in the event that that western road did not, was not approved, and the Veterans Post said, gosh, in light of that, we'd like to go to 10 feet or 12 feet. I mean, I, I just see a relationship there, but if, if they say there is none, then...
The, the way the parking lot was constructed or designed clearly allows plenty of room for, I mean, it meets all of the code requirements for getting a fire truck back there or an ambulance back there. Now, the turning radius thing is driven entirely by the fire department for the fire truck, and how close they have to get to being a full circumference around the building. But there's only roughly, I don't know, 60 feet that's, that doesn't have roadway, when you look at the, how much road there is on the west side, and all of the roadway down on the lower end on the north. I mean, I think that in largely the parking lot, sure, everyone's got pickup trucks, and they've got big hitches on the back that stick out an extra foot. But, I mean, I, I think that growing at eight feet is a minor issue in the speed of this. The drive on the west is a very different, because that's really changing the, all of the options from the very beginning.
And so, Kate, are you saying by that, that there would be no benefit to emergency vehicles if the parking lot were extended more than eight feet?
I think it has a lot to do with traffic and the size of cars that are going down there. I mean, and maybe the kind of, I don't know, maybe it's just visibility. I mean, it's, it's sized to be a normal parking lot.
And I think too, over time, it just gets, I think parking tends to get a little sloppy, and, well, you know, maybe I'm not parked, I shouldn't be parked here, but I parked here last time, so, and nobody said anything, you know? So I think maybe, you know, a little bit better policing on those parking spaces might help as well.
And I don't know if they're well, they may not be well striped. I, I mean, I think to some extent, what we're hearing is more of a parking management issue and not a meeting the code of the requirements of an ambulance or a fire truck.
Yes, yes.
This is Dave Huzer speaking. So I have no problem with extending the north parking lot, they knew it eight-foot, 10-foot, whatever. But I was on the commission when this was first brought to the commission years ago, and I, we promised the folks that there would be the setback of 45-foot, and I think we got a hold to that. And I don't think we need to be bringing in that driveway into the picture here. It has to, it needs to go, I think we have to live with it. If they want to go 10, 12-foot to the north, I don't have any problem, but I don't see there's any connection with that driveway along there, because we did promise the residents that there was going to be a 45-foot, and there's supposed to be a burn with foliage, some type of trees or whatever along there to shelter the facility, and I think we got a hold to that. And I mean, that goes back to whatever it was, 10 or 12 or 11, I don't remember when it was, but I think we got a hold to that, and I don't think there's a connection. Obviously, we need distance there to have a turnaround, and they can take it back to the north there, but I think we got a hold to that, that setback.
Are you ready to vote?
Yes, yes.
So would you read the motion?
Move the Planning and Serving Commission recommend approval of amendment three to the Waverly Area Veterans Post's special provisional use permit to the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second. Is that Doug?
Yep, Doug, sorry.
Thank you. Would you read it, Isaac?
Yep, just to clarify, the third amendment is to extend the parking lot located on the northern side of the Waverly Area Veterans Post Building, eight feet to the north. Roll call vote, we'll start with David Huzer.
Yes.
Kathy Olson?
Yes.
Heidi Solheim?
Yes.
Hank Bagelman?
Yes.
Kate Payne?
Yes.
Doug Ben Scooter?
Yes.
Richard Dane?
Yes.
Mary French?
Yes.
Stephanie Garner?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Amendment three is going to be recommended. Let's go to amendment four.
Amendment four is to extend the boat ramp access to the western side of the Waverly Area Veteran Post Building. Currently, the boat ramp is only accessible via the northern parking lot. The Waverly Area Veterans Post is requesting to extend a road on the western side of the WAVP building that would connect to the southern parking lot. Extending the access road would also allow for vendor trucks, emergency vehicles, to access the rear of the building more easily. In the new special request submitted by the WAVP, they write, "The risk management access, because of the increased activities, weddings, family nights, et cetera, near the lower parking lot, we are also seeking approval to provide an emergency access to that area rather than funneling the only access route through the parking area. This additional emergency access for fire, rescue, and law enforcement has been encouraged by our insurance carrier for lowering our risk factor. Staff does not have a recommendation for this amendment."
Staff does not have a recommendation for this amendment.
Okay, let's go to the petitioner. Anything to add to what Isaac wrote, read?
No.
Anyone in the audience who would like to be heard?
This is Greg Gash. Yeah, I'm totally opposed to this for, I think, obvious reasons, and I think it's important to maintain the 45-foot buffer zone. I think the buffer zone was exactly the tool that allowed the city to approve the provisional use originally, because that's the compromise between the residential use area and the commercial use area. Thank you.
Anyone else?
This is Barbara Waltman, and we definitely are opposed to this additional road on the west side or expansion out there. As you might note from the drawing, it runs right into the current road going down to the dock, which that gravel road, according to the plan in 2015, was supposed to have been moved further to the east. We are opposed to having this on the west side.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We find a red dead garden.
Anyone from the audience who would like to speak? Hearing none, let's move it into the commission.
I think we need to respect the original agreements with the 45-foot buffer.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Yeah, Doug, this is Doug. Yeah, my takeaway on this too, in listening to, it's really been important for me to hear what Greg Gash has said. I mean, he's been very reasonable on the first, second, and third amendment in giving his opinion, because he's really the one that's, in my opinion, the most directly affected. He's the guy that's closest, he sees it, and he's been reasonable on the other three amendments. This is one that he says, this really does affect him, and I think that should carry a lot of weight. So I agree, I think it's probably not going to be something that's going to work very well, and we need to respect the neighbors on this one.
I mean, Dave...
Dave Huser.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Dave, and I stated earlier during the third amendment, and I do think this is what our original agreement was, and I think we have to respect that, you know, because we made that promise to the residents in the area.
Dave, you and I served at the same time on the commission, and we talked about a 45-foot wide screen, and I think the exact words were vegetative screening. I went out the other day, and I counted 15 trees over what is listed here as 789 feet. And when I look at the site plan, which was to be the guide, that site plan looks like 45 feet is pretty full of vegetative screening, but what's on the ground is not that. The other question I have about the road is, how do you get the road past the shed that we've been talking about, that would be coming out of the catering area? And how much of the vegetation would you have to take to get from where the front of the building is back to the back? How wide was that road going to be?
Well, this, as you stated, Hank, this was very controversial at that time, and, you know, that was the important part, if you recall, that, I think it was supposed to be kind of a berm with the foliage and trees or screening, whatever, on top of that berm to really shut this off from the residents. And so, I mean, that, you know, we probably had a meeting about as long as a few minutes tonight on that whole situation, if you recall.
Well, the other thing is that the grade drops off dramatically as you get to the north, and to sort of argue that it's about safety and getting fire trucks and ambulances through there is just not consistent with the grade and the way you would have to make the turns work for a fire truck to get through there. But I just think that rather than beating the dead horse, I would say that I don't think there's anyone on the commission that's going to support this. So can we maybe put a motion on the table?
Please.
Okay, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of Amendment Four to the Waverly Area Veterans Post Special Provisional Use Permit to the Board of Adjustment.
I'm sorry, can I?
Did you, did you say that we do not recommend?
No, reading it, we recommend approval of the Amendment Four. And then we'll vote it down.
All right, just to clarify, the second, did I have David Huser on the second?
Yeah. Roll call.
Okay, so just to clarify before we vote, the motion is move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of Amendment Four, which is to extend the boat ramp access to the western side of the WAVP building, to the, Amendment Four to the Waverly Area Veterans Post Special Provisional Use Permit to the Board of Adjustments. A yes vote is to recommend approval, a no vote is to vote against that. So roll call vote. We will start with Kathy Olson.
No.
Heidi Solheim.
No.
Hank Begelman.
No.
Kate Payne.
No.
Doug Ben Scooter.
No.
Richard Dane.
Nope.
Mary French.
No.
Stephanie Garner.
Stephanie Garner?
No.
Oh. Dave Huser.
No.
Motion fails.
The motion has failed. We'll now move to regular business. There is one for this evening under all business, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and I would suggest that we, unless there's something that's come up, that we put that off until we meet in March. Is there any new business?
I do have one new business. A couple of months back, we talked about the old Irving School site and potential development on that site. Staff would like to put together a task force of sorts, basically three volunteers from this commission to meet with three volunteers from the Economic Development Commission to talk about what we'd like to rezone that property, if we'd like to rezone it, residential three, residential four, to have a more in-depth conversation about that. We would like to meet the week of February 15th. We're thinking an evening meeting via Zoom, but we'll work that out once we get the volunteers from both commissions. So like I said, we'd like to have three volunteers from this commission to talk about that subject.
Hey, who would make themselves available?
I'll do it, Kate.
Hank, I'll do it. Dave.
Dave and Kathy. So Kate, Dave and Kathy, thank you very much. Isaac, any other new business?
That is all the new business that I have.
Hey, before we adjourn, I want to thank all of you. It's been a long evening, but I think we've made some headway, and these recommendations will be taken to the Board of Adjustment, and we'll see where it goes from there. They'll be meeting second week in March, I believe. It's after our meeting.
Yes, that's correct. Second week of March is when we're planning on bringing this to the Board of Adjustments.
Okay, they all go with our recommendations. Okay, motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Kathy? Second?
You betcha.
Okay, thank you. Pleasant evening, all.
Thank you, everyone.